All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order at exactly 6:00. And I'd like to take a moment to thank the Temecula Conservatory of Music for the wonderful Prelude music. Let's give them all a nice round of applause.[22.68][22.68](APPLAUSE). I know we've always enjoyed that, and so it was nice to hear that again, and hopefully we can, we'll see you back. So, thank you for that. Okay, we'll go, first, we'll have our invocation led by Chaplain Mizizi of the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, and then for the flag salute today, I'm going to ask our Chair of the Public Traffic Safety Commission, Chair Carter, to lead us in the pledge.
Let us pray. Eternum Lord, these leaders gather here today in this council meeting with open hearts and minds, seeking guidance and wisdom for the city of Temecula. They've come together recognizing the responsibility they have to govern with fairness, compassion, and justice. I pray, dear Lord, that they may be guided by integrity and a genuine desire to save the people of Temecula. Grant them, dear Lord, the strength and wisdom to make decisions that will promote the well-being of all residents and lead to the prosperity of the city. I pray, dear Lord, that discussions during this meeting will be filled with civility and open-mindedness, allowing for fruitful deliberations that lead to positive outcomes for the city. In times of disagreement, may they seek common ground and find solutions that benefit the greater good. Help them, dear Lord, to transcend their differences and work together as a community bound to a shared vision of progress and harmony. I pray, dear Lord, that you would bless those who have dedicated their lives to public service, past and present. May we, as a community, express our gratitude for their contributions to the growth and betterment of Temecula. May you comfort the families of the firemen who lost their lives on Sunday while protecting our environment and also our properties. I offer this prayer with humility and hope, trusting that through our collective efforts and your guidance, Temecula will continue to thrive and shine as a beacon of unity and prosperity. In your holy name, I pray, amen.[189.56][189.56](APPLAUSE).
Please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[207.45][207.45](APPLAUSE).
All right, thank you. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Calvis.
Here.
Mayor Schwenk.
I'm here.
And Mayor Potem Stewart.
Here.
All right, we are all here. We'll move to our Board and Commission reports. This evening, we have our Traffic Safety Commission. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and staff. Okay, as you see on the board, the slide up there, we have five traffic commissioners, myself, Eric Ackerman, Dave Maddox, James Richardson, and Bradley Sullivan. The Traffic Commission reviews and makes recommendations on topics related to speed zones, stop signs, signals, pavement markings, traffic design and engineering. We meet monthly on the fourth Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM, and our last meeting was held Thursday, July 27. Staff provided a presentation regarding their efforts with the residents of the Los Ranchitos community, who have voiced concerns regarding excessive speeding and general safety concerns on Yonex and Deportola Road between Santiago and Margarita Road. We had 20 Los Ranchitos residents passionately address the Commission with their concerns. In working with the residents to address the elevated speeding on the corridor, staff developed several ideas that can be considered near-term, such as reduce vehicle lanes to minimum 10-foot and add a bike buffer where feasible, re-stripe and enhance striping at existing horse crossings, add two new horse crossings with striping signage, flashing beacons. One location will be at La Paz Road, and the other will be at Yonex, approximately 1,300 feet east of Yorba Road. Install two more VCOM signs along the corridor, add speed enforced by radar signs at several locations on the corridor, add entering traffic com neighborhood signs at several locations on the corridor, install flashing sign and roundabout for eastbound direction, install dash striping at roundabout entries to encourage vehicles to slow down, redesign improvements in the center of the roundabout at La Paz and Yonex, and increase police enforcement on the corridor, and increase rotation of the sheriff radar speed trailer on the corridor. The Commissioner voted 3-0, we had two absent, to implement the near-term solutions and continue to monitor its effectiveness. On the right of the slide up there, you'll see the long-term. Any of those would be coming before the City Council at a future as we move forward through this. And that's my presentation. Any questions?
All right, any questions? All right, we appreciate you being here. Thank you. All right, next is our Public Safety report. I'm going to actually dispense with the reading of this report. Chief Crater is with his firefighter family. Chaplain Mizizi mentioned the tragic events over the weekend, and we want to encourage you all to keep our CAL FIRE firefighters in your hearts and in your minds. All right, we'll move on to public comments. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two public comments. The first is Brad Bone.
Thank you so much for letting me talk today. I'm Mayor Schwenk, councilmembers and other community leaders. 10 years ago, I came to Temecula with my family, six children, lost my job within the first three months, and tried to figure out, what do I do? I looked around the community, I found a need for strings, string and music education. So, I started Temecula Conservatory of Music. It quickly grew, and within five years, we grew to a number where we were able to take our top two orchestras to New York City and perform onstage at Carnegie Hall in 2019. After COVID, we kind of reduced some numbers, but we were able to come back up about now, and we're planning on heading to Austria in 2024. Our kids are the ones that were performing for the Prelude today, and it is our hope that we can get some support from the city, as we will be representing the city in both Vienna and Salzburg and Prague during a one-week period of time. We'll be performing in historic locations, and we will be making sure everybody knows that we are from Temecula, California. And it's my hope over the last 10 years that we'll be able to provide a great place for some really smart kids to learn how to perform and how to play, and to have a great place to come and feel safe and produce music. In these kind of days we live in, I think music's really important. It's one of those things where you can't really describe it, but music can bring a lot of hope to you and to give you the feelings that you just can't have without music. And I think music is magic, and for kids and learning music, I think it's a wonderful thing and opportunity for them to become leaders, to learn how to help others. In our organization, we have something called Musical Mentors, where we have the older kids mentor the younger kids. So, the kids that have been playing for, you know, 10 years can start helping the kids who have been playing for 10 months. And we have parties to help them work together and to teach them, and it gives the older kids, that are usually teenagers, that usually think about themselves, a chance to think about others, and something that we just started last semester. And we're excited about it because it's given these kids a chance to be leaders. We feel like our organization is a great thing in this community, and that we provide a lot of, a lot of hope for the kids, and we feel like we are something that we could definitely use your, your help. These kids are going, they're taking their own money to go internationally, and if we can get some help to do that, that'd be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Mr. Mayor, our final speaker, we actually have a special guest in the House. We have Supervisor Karen Spiegel with us tonight. Welcome, Supervisor.
Good evening and welcome to Temecula.
I know the first thing is, why is she here? Right? That's what you said to me. Mayor Schwenk and Mayor Potem Stewart, and all the councilmembers, and everybody else here, I am here because this is our 12th Annual Women's Leadership Conference, and it has been going on so long, and we're finding that it doesn't spread throughout the county. It is a partnership with Riverside County, so it is a countywide, and so I am here attending many councilmembers, not all of them. There's 28 cities, I haven't gotten to them all, but I'm, this is my first year doing this. So, I founded this 12 years ago, so I was on the City Council in Corona at the time, and it was not so much about electives by any means, it's more of getting people to step up. And I see people, even though we call it women's leadership, we have quite a few men that attend, because it's all about learning, and all of us have the capacity to continue to learn. So, this is what the opportunity is, is to come together, there's networking, there's many speakers that talk about the opportunities, things we should be doing, things we could look at, all different varieties, all different walks of life that address the group. And we have an expo, so there's, there's opportunity for businesses to share their, whatever they have to offer. So, I'm trying to reach out and ask the cities to share on their platforms of just kind of pushing it out there. It's just, and look at more of an opportunity. People don't take that first step, and you all have because you're sitting up there. But we need to give a hand up and help people as they move on in their lives. And it's not for necessarily just for electeds, for joining that first committee on a PTA or making that opportunity and stepping forward in your, in your job, but giving encouragement, cheerleading, whatever it takes to help people move on. And so, that's what this is all about, and I'm here to really encourage you, and I will be emailing it to your clerk, Randy, and give some opportunity to share the information. And for cities, we have a way you can bundle tickets if you, the city wants to, or at least push it out so that people have the opportunity. It is September 14th, it is in Corona, just because I've been doing it there. We actually moved at the Riverside Convention Center for three years. We had a better attendance coming from the south and from, from the, currently my district, but it is open for all the county, and we have already about 700 attending. We're looking at reaching 1,000 this year, so it's really exciting, and hopefully you'll take advantage and help us share the words.
Wonderful. Absolutely, we'll share.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for sharing, yeah. Have a good night.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comments.
Okay, we'll move on to City Council reports. Do any of my council colleagues have anything this evening? I just got, Councilmember Brown? No, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, as was mentioned earlier regarding the fatalities that happened on Sunday, not many people know, but I retired from CAL FIRE on July 1 of this year, and I know Chief Crater isn't here tonight, but had he attended tonight, I was going to praise him for the work that he's doing within the Temecula Division of CAL FIRE in supporting and consoling not only the firefighters here, but also by helping Unit Chief Bill Weiser, who's a Riverside County Fire Chief, as well as Region Chief Dave Foulter, who oversees half this region or half the state, in support of Chief or Director Tyler with CAL FIRE. So, the two that perish were well-like, fire family, and I know Chief Crater with the work that he's done here with behavioral, mental health, and peer support, he's out there now delivering that to the firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, for adding that perspective. Appreciate that. I do have one quick slide, and it's, it's a little performative. State of the City is, is on Thursday. I hope everyone will come out and join. It is sold out, so if you don't have a ticket, I don't know, maybe you can try the Internet or scalper or something, I don't know how that works. But we're looking forward to telling our story, and I think our community, the business community, the city community, has a great story to tell. I'm really looking forward to delivering this address Thursday morning at Pechanga. So, I hope to see everyone there. All right, we will move on to our consent calendar, and all matters listed under consent are considered to be routine. So, item number one, waive reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions included in the agenda. Item number two, approve action minutes of July 25, 2023. Item number three, approve list of demands. Four, receive report regarding status of upcoming vacancies on commissions. And that's all.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Okay, and that passes 5-0. I'm going to recess the City Council meeting to the Temecula Community Services District Meeting.
And I will call to order the Temecula Community Service District Meeting. Madam City Clerk, please note we're all still here. Any public comments? All right, so we just have our consent calendar, which is approved action minutes of 20, July 25, 23.
Motion.
Second.
It's been motion seconded, please vote. All right, that passes 5-0. Director Report.
Yes, just one item this evening we'd like to bring everyone's attention to. We'll be having our Culture Days again on Saturday, August 12. We do these once a month on Saturdays over at Sam Hicks Monument Park in front of Temecula Valley Museum. Each Saturday of the month, we, or each Saturday once a month, we celebrate the culture of a different country. This time, it will be the culture of Columbia. So, we encourage everyone to come out, enjoy some music, refreshments, crafts, and just a very family-friendly, good time. That concludes my report.
Thank you. General Manners Report.
Nothing further, Mr. President.
All right, so, anything from the Board of Directors?
Nothing.
All right, I will adjourn until the next one.
All right, I will reconvene the Temecula Public Finance Authority meeting. Madam City Clerk, please note we're all still here. Do we have any public comments? Okay, moving to consent, item six, approve action minutes of July 25, 2023.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Let us vote. Okay, that passes 5-0. Executive Director's Report.
Nothing further.
Board of Directors, anything?
Nothing.
All right, we're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting to the next one, and we will reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. We have one item under business. Item seven, receive report regarding Senate Bill 329 pertaining to City Council compensation and provide general direction regarding the same at the request of Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we can have a staff report for this item that is placed on the agenda at the request of Councilmember Brown. The city of Temecula is a general law city formed under the laws of the state of California. The council compensation schedule for general law cities is set forth in the government code. Currently, the city council compensation is set at $600 per month pursuant to Temecula Municipal Code, Section 204050. It was last set in June 2003, approximately 20 years ago. On June 29, 2023, Senate Bill 329 was signed into law. The SB 329, sponsored by the League of California Cities, declares that compensation schedule for general law cities has not been adjusted since 1984, indicating compensation has not kept pace with inflation. The legislature also declared that the compensation adjustments for inflation may help city councils become more diverse, allowing individuals from across different income levels to serve the public and support their families. SB 329 is permissive and not mandatory. It increases the amount of city council salaries based on population size and permits salary adjustments by ordinance at two public meetings, and it allows for additional modifications under specified circumstances. Automatic adjustments for CPI are not allowed. For cities, $75,000 to $150,000 in population, which includes Temecula, compensation is set at a maximum of $1,900, $1,900 per month. SB 329 also sets forth an alternative formula based on a maximum 5% increase per year from the date of the last adjustment, which in this case, 2003 to 2023, times 5%, it's about $1,200. As such, the $1,900 set forth in SB 329 remains the maximum, as far as the cap is concerned. Should the city council provide direction to adjust the compensation, staff will go ahead and return with a related ordinance at a future meeting. Pursuant to the government code, any change in compensation currently does not apply to a council member during the council member's term of office. As such, any adjustments would not be effective until the certification of the November 2024 election, until such time. And any adjustment will be applicable to the full city council after the certification at that time. So, this was on at the request of Councilmember Brown. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Brown for any additional comments, after which, Mr. Mayor, you're welcome to have discussion and direction. I do not have any public comments on this item.
Thank you, Randy. At the last council, may I have to apologize to you for catching you off guard with bringing this up for future council agendas, but I know this is new, just passed in June of 2023. I'd like to highlight some points for the council as we go into discussion that Randy mentioned. The first is that there hasn't been a raise to the city council's salary since 2003, so almost 20 years. And prior to that, 1984 was the last time that there's been an adjustment by the legislature. I'm going to ask for a $1,900, the max, maximum cap. I think that if, moving forward, it's not about us, it's about future council members, and I think if we raise it to the maximum cap, it will, it will alleviate having to adjust later, because there is no mechanism for CPI adjustments. And then, I think my last point is, or my next-to-last point is, it's not about us, it's about after, it won't be effective until after the 2024 election, right? And so, not every council member, per the law, has to take it. Council members may waive it. And so, if you so choose to, or you oppose it, ask that you don't think about yourself, you think about future council members. And I'll open it up for discussion or hand it over to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Councilmember Brown. I'll go ahead and open up to the balance of the council if anyone has any questions or comments. All right, I guess I'll go ahead and throw in my, my thoughts. I think this is a good move. When I was reading the SB 329, I was thinking about, you know, something we've been talking about for a while, is creating spaces for people to run for office and, and not have it be an exclusive club, well, you can afford to be here, and so that's why you're there, right? I think it's important that while $1,900 is not a lot in, in the real world of no one's going to fully quit their job and start doing city council work, that's not what this does, but I think it creates a space to offset many of the costs, to defray many of the costs that we incur traveling to meetings and having lunch with constituents, and, you know, maybe there's family things that need to be covered, right? Whether it's, you know, your children, you need someone to watch your children, I mean, those are realistic things that people have to deal with. So, I think the intent of 329 is great. I do like that it doesn't take effect until after the next election, so I think that's great, and, and I would support just moving to the 1,900. And for perspective, the city council pay is $600 a month right now, and, you know, not everybody works the same amount of hours, but we all put in a significant amount of time, and then that $600 divided by the hours we spend is very, is very small, but I think the point is we should lower the bar for folks that can serve in the future, and I think that's really where, where my heart lands on this. Anyone else?
If I can. Randy, can you give me that other formula? There was another one at about 1,200, please.
Yeah, so that other formula, basically for those city councils that had kept up along the way, and they were doing routine increases at 5%, so that caps it at 5% since your last increase. So, in this case, the last increase was in 2003, and your current salary is at $600, so at 5% over 20 years, it would have been 1,200. So, that's why the 1,900 remains the higher max.
Okay, thank you so much. As for me, one of the things, I mean, I know I've spoken to another council member about this a little bit, just looking at, yes, we make $600, but the truth is, I am a public servant as well, and I didn't come in here for the money, I came to serve the community. On top of that, just to remind everybody too, we do get a car allowance of $400 plus a cafeteria account of $1,200. So, we do get a good stipend. I think three of us, before we came on, I think myself, Curtis, and Brendan, we also thought the mayor position, because I think we all saw that there was something online, that there was a higher percentage, I think, for mayor. I don't know where that was, I know the three of us did see it at some point in time. But my personal opinion, listen, I've got five kids, I'd love to be able to get a huge raise, but again, I don't do it for the raise, I do this because I love the job, and I just, I actually had $1,200 written down here on my paper, and Randy, when you said that 5%, I think that just resonates with me, that I think that's compensation enough for what we do, and I think it will definitely encourage people who want to be here to do their job. So, that's where I stand on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Calvis, anything?
I was just, just looking at the dates from 1984 to 2003, that was 19 years, 2003 to 2023, that was 20 years. I think it wouldn't be far-fetched to say the next time a city council would vote on this would be around 2043. So, for me, I would agree with Councilmember Brown and Mayor. On the 1,900, I think is, is an adequate amount for a future city council to, to receive. And again, it doesn't take effect until the next election, and there's two up for reelection, so those have to win those seats to even get that increase. But again, I think this is ultimately, it will just improve and, I guess, make bigger the pool of applicants for this position, and I think that's what it's all about. I think this will, like you said, Mayor, it'll give someone the opportunity to either pay for babysitting and to take that extra day off of work, the two a month, or get that extra degree while they're doing this, that, that little bonus. So, I would agree with Councilmember Brown and Mayor on the 1,900 would be an adequate number for our compensation.
All right, thank you. Mayor Potem, anything?
I'll just say that I, I do agree that, I feel like I'm a public servant, so I don't really, I don't look at the compensation, but to your point, also, I can afford to do that. And so, I, I do see, you know, your point that it would bring perhaps a different pool of candidates to the city council, whether that's good or bad or indifferent, I do not know. But I, I can see your point, I see Jessica's point, so, that being said.
All right, so, I think you had mentioned you'd like to make a motion. Councilmember Brown, go ahead and feel free to make a motion.
Yeah, make a motion. I make a motion to approve the $1,900 cap for city council members and be brought back per the ordinance.
All right, I'll second that. Let us vote. All right, and that does not, oh, that, I'm sorry, that does pass 3 to 2 with Councilmember Alexander and Mayor Potem Stewart voting no. All right, thank you very much. Does anyone have an item for future city council agendas?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Stewart, the floor is yours.
I would like to bring up the compensation for our commissioners, because we had a Commissioner appreciation luncheon the other day, and it was mistakenly said they were making $150 per meeting, and then it was corrected, they're making $100 per meeting, and I think, based on what they do, and they only get paid for the meetings when they're sitting at the dais. They don't get paid for the meetings they're doing in the offices upstairs, or if they have to do a road trip to check out something, you know, as far as anything, you know, and they do a lot, they're out in the community a lot, or many of our commissioners are at a lot of ribbon, ribbon cuttings and mural. are at a lot of ribbon, ribbon cuttings and mural. What do you call that when you're showing a mural?
Unveiling.
Reveal.
Unveiling.
Yes, unveiling. So I, I really think $150 per meeting they're sitting here is still really, really cheap for what they, what they do. And again, they're, they feel the same as, you know, we do. We're, we're public servants. So it's not about the money, but they do put in a lot of time, and I think the city, especially, I mean, if, if we were struggling to pay down the debt on this, this building when it's, we just paid it off, or struggling to pay for a facility that we just paid off. And so, and we're in a really good spot, and I think this is kind of like the low-hanging fruit. This is perhaps the, the easiest and the most minute line item increase to a city budget is taking care of our commissioners. So I, I would like to see that brought back to the city council and discuss that.
Okay, I'll go ahead and, I'll second that because I was also at that commission breakfast. We should think about the time people spend, right? Your time is valuable, and you provide a valuable service to the council, and we want to make sure that, again, we want to make sure that folks are compensated for their time and the effort that they put in, and our commissions are doing a great job. Fun fact, it was only $50 when I was appointed, and when Lelay was first appointed, and skipped the same way, so $100, we definitely need to work on that. Any other quick questions or comments on this item? If not, we'll go ahead and vote.
Mr. Mayor, I have a first by Mayor Portem Stewart and a second by you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, and that passes five zero, so we'll see that at a future agenda. City managers report this evening?
Nothing further to add, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. City Attorney, anything?
No report tonight.
Okay, I do have a, a quick slide before we adjourn. I want to take a moment and make sure that we acknowledge the service to our community, and we will be adjourning this meeting after a brief moment of silence in memory of Assistant Chief Josh Bischoff, Fire Captain Tim Rodriguez, and Pilot Tony Sousa. We are adjourned.